This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call the city council workshop Tuesday, September 3, 2024. It is 5:22 PM. Can I have the roll call, please?
Yes. Kenneth Burgess.
Here.
Charles Proctor.
Here.
Lance Smith. Jody Wilkinson. Steven Spina.
Here.
Mayor Munson.
Here.
William Poe.
Here.
Matthew Maggard.
Okay. If I could ask everybody at this time to make sure you silence your electronics. At this point, we have a citizens comments. This is for items that are not already on the agenda. So does anybody signed up to speak to anything?
I don't have anybody with me. Let me double check the board.
Okay.
Anybody sign up? You're good, Ricardo. Nobody signed up?
All right, we.
Save you a trip.
This will be the day somebody.
We just have the one item, the workshop item of the draft budget presentation. So I'm going to turn it over to the city manager at this time.
All right. So since the 26th workshop, these are the total changes. Capital outlay was decreased by just over $5.5 million. That change was from the tennis center. Those state appropriation dollars were removed from fiscal year '25 budget because we encumbered the funds this year. And also, there was $1.25 million for affluent pump station. And those dollars were encumbered this year as well. So both of those projects, along with some other projects, much smaller projects, were taken out of the fiscal year '25 because the dollars were encumbered this year. So that's the $5.5 million decrease. The personnel services, the $307,000, that is raises in the dollars that we spoke about last meeting. The operating expenditures decreased by $42,000. Departments went through and kind of scrubbed their budgets a little bit. The budgeted reserves that increased. You have to help me on this one. I'm sorry. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
I'm gonna say it wrong. You can come to this one.
Jessica Carter, Finance Supervisor for the City of Zephyr Hills. So the budgeted reserves, the capital project that was in the wastewater department, 1.25, came out of capital and went down into his reserve line item as overflow funds at the moment for excess revenues. So that's why that number increased. So it just went from one line item to the other.
So for in total, there's a $4 million decrease in the budget that was proposed to you on the 26th. Any questions?
And tell me again why the personnel services increased. That's just between the drafts because of?
Of the raises and things we talked about last meeting, plugging in numbers, assuming, making some assumptions and plugging in. Council was asking what it would cost for the raises. So we made the assumption of the scenario that you saw at the last meeting, which was the 4% and 3%. And then the assumption with the unions. So that's how those numbers increased.
And then the budgeted reserves?
Budgeted reserves is the affluent pump station.
Okay, okay.
We moved those dollars.
All right. You had, all right, never mind.
That was it?
Oh, yeah.
Good.
So the governmental budget changes. Gosh. The communication service tax increased by just over $50,000. The gas tax increased by $8,700. The ZPD MOU revenue increased by $20,000. That was revenue that we weren't aware of until we had a conversation with chief. And so that was added. It's a reimbursable amount. Investigations, we increased by $10,000. The planning departments line item, professional services, was decreased by $75,000 because there was a grant that we applied for that we did not receive. We lowered the CRA capital land purchase by $2,000. We lowered the general fund administration overtime, professional services, R and N buildings, and legal ads by 76. That was a combined dollar amount. Said earlier, the tennis center was removed out of fiscal year '25. We added two new capital purchases for the PD cameras, which was for $45,000. And that was out of impact fees. What was the second one? What was the other project, you know, or the other item?
Both camera.
Oh, they're both camera, okay. We increased the stormwater pump station upgrades from 200,000 to 400,000 based on an estimate that we received. Added 500,000 to the general fund to reserves. That was from the undesignated reserves. So that's a contingency line item. In case anything bad happens, we have some dollars we can pull from. Workers' comp rate decreased from 2.77% to 2.3566%. And salaries, as I said, were entered at 4% and 3%. And then the tiered incentive pay. The tiered incentive pay was emailed to you, but then I also passed it out to add the $250 to the 18 employees that were receiving zero. That was additional $4,500. So it's $147,000. To increase the amounts to 2,000, 1,500, 1,500, that would cost $221,500. Then there's also the list, the count of employees who would receive which amount. Questions?
I have a question on the workman's comp. Decreased, was that because we were pretty good about not making a lot of claims? Or is it?
I will have to say that the HR director worked really hard with our provider. And they worked, yeah. I meant.
She did a good job, but.
Well, good job.
And do we know a dollar amount that would be roughly? Just a guess even?
From the first draft to the second draft, it was, at first, it was a cost savings of about a little over $40,000. But then, of course, when we plugged in all the anticipated, you know, proposed union rates and stuff like that, that number, you know, it's based on salary. So when salaries increased, the number will fluctuate, yeah.
Correct.
So it was the general fund. The enterprise budget changes. We lowered the airport repair and maintenance by 5,000. That's for the, like, the lights and the pappies, all things I don't know exactly what are, but they're along the runway. Pilots hit them every once in a while. Sanitation rentals leases by 2,000. Utility fund, the water telephone by 5,000. Wastewater overtime, 20. Treatment plant, affluent pump, talked about that, removing that or bringing it into fiscal year '24. Workers' comp rate, same story, decreased in the salaries, same as the general fund.
I have a question then. How can you lower wastewater overtime?
Looking at the numbers and what was projected and historical spending.
That's one area where we're kind of continually understaffed, isn't it, in there? So.
Yes. Based on what the numbers we looked at, yes.
Billy, you said that we're going to give them 4% on 10/13 and then the other 3% on 4/13 for a total of seven, not counting the bonuses.
Correct. That is what's in the budget currently, yes.
There's no way to do it all at once?
No.
What kind of a difference would that make?
I would have to go back in and plug it in.
I just.
I don't have that number readily available for you, but I can take a look.
Whatever you. We'll get the. 4%. Three times your. That percentage for a lot of them will bring their salary up quite a bit. I mean, $1,500 on what's under 40?
Right.
Is what, 3% more or something? Or depending on?
I don't know. I can't do math that quick.
Bonuses start at 2,000 though, correct? And then it's 2.
So that's a conversation that needs to be, we need direction from council. Is 1,500,000, 500 is what was proposed. Then there was a question of adding 250 for anybody that was over $80,000. So we gave you that number. And then there was a conversation on increasing numbers from 2,000, making them 2,000, 1,500, 1,500. And I gave you that number. So there needs to be direction on what that bonus structure, what you would like to see as a council, that bonus structure.
For me personally, I'd like to start at it too, but I mean, I get it. But, all right, again, I disagree. It's okay. You know, I mean, your neighbors on 8th Street might not think that, think that three lump. Budgeting. For a lot, when their taxes and their groceries and their things are going up as well, probably not getting. By the time they were done, some employees will be getting over 8% raises.
Oh, can I say when I suggested that was when I thought we were doing a flat 4%? I did not know we were going to do four and then three on top of it. So I apologize for throwing that one out. But that's where it changed in the middle of all this, so.
Yeah, I will concur with what the mayor said. Was that, once it became 7%, you kind of backed away from that statement of increasing the incentive. I know the employees don't want to hear that, but that was the conversation. Any questions?
No. Hang on. What's in there now is the four, the three, and then which one of these? 142.5 or?
The middle column with adding the 250.
Okay.
To the higher up.
Got you.
So the 147,000 is what was added in along with the four and the three.
Thank you. Total 100.
For incentive pays, yes.
And all that, the funding for that is, we're using undesignated reserves because it is a one-time expense. Don't foresee it reoccurring. So we used undesignated reserves for that.
And that, moving from the undesignated reserves, I was getting that mixed up with the other reserves you had in this.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's where I was going.
Oh, okay, all right. Here's the tiered incentive pay. Again, we talked about this, just shows the number of employees that are going to get each dollar amount. Meeting schedule, I will pause here for a second, or actually, probably more than a second. I did receive questions from council. I'd asked each of you to send me kind of your questions for this evening. There was. Hold on. So there was a question on, to clarify, clarify the funding sources for the City Yard project. Currently, there's $1.2 million of penny for Pasco for the general fund, 600,000 out of the utility fund, 200,000 out of the sanitation fund. And that is for the design and engineering of the City Yard complex. The future funding for construction is, will be funded through the use of undesignated fund balance and debt financing. So that's something we'll have to, we'll have to sit, have a conversation, and lay out that plan of how we pay for that going forward. There's another question about the funding for the airport terminal. Currently, we're working, just to bring everybody up to speed, the funding, the state appropriation that we received was $6.6 million. The box hangers and the taxiway foxtrot came in and we're eating just about all of that money, at least enough of it that it's not feasible to, not enough to do anything else with. So we are looking at, we're having conversations with our state representatives on how we can reappropriate and pull the terminal out of the current appropriation request. And so what that means, we have a couple of options. One, we ask for additional appropriation, you know, next year or in the coming years. Or two, we can wait until fiscal year '27, '28, or a year in the future and go to the FAA and DOT, sorry, to FDOT and ask for a 50-50 grant to pay for it. So obviously, the state appropriation hopefully would get us the most amount of money. So we would have conversations with our state representatives, try to go that route. If not, we would then turn towards FDOT and try to go for a 50-50 grant.
Did you say then that the box hangers and the taxiway will eat up the whole 6.6 million? Is that what you said?
Yes.
So, but that was supposed to be included in the terminal, but the prices have gone up?
Correct. Yes.
Wow.
Yeah. And the sad part, I guess, is that there, we had an appropriation for the itinerant parking. And we came in way under budget on that. But because it was designated for itinerant parking, they won't allow us to merge the funds together. So those dollars just go back to the state.
And the terminal is about 4 million?
4.9.
Close to 5 million.
Yeah.
So if we pull it out, is that preclude us from going forward again in the future as an appropriation?
Those are the conversations we're having.
Okay.
Yeah. I was told reappropriation is not a good word in Tallahassee. So you have to be very careful. So Representative Maggard's aide, Jeff, was going to look into some things for me, which today is his last day. So we'll start over again.
Man, I saw Danny today. I wish I knew, I would have.
We've spoken to him as well. I mean, we've spoken to his office.
What about, can we pull Wilton into the conversation since he's directed a lot of money here? I mean.
We'll use every avenue we can. Yeah. We're not afraid to ask.
But with that appropriation, we get the two, the two big box hangers, right? And all of the taxiway that we're looking for?
Okay.
I guess maybe my question is, is when we asked for that money and we got the appropriation, was it for the FBO? And then if we're not using it for that, are we going to be considered again?
That's part of the reappropriation and making sure that we get the language correct. So we met, I talked to Secretary Gwynn, the map meeting that was held in Dade City. I'd spoken to him. He had given me some language or suggestion because it's, the funding's through DOT. So obviously, we don't want to upset them. But we also need to work through the, you know, Senator Burgess and Representative Maggard's offices to make sure they have the right language, or we get the right language to them, I guess.
Hey, also, no.
There was a question about funding sources for the Zephyr Park. And that will be, again, undesignated reserves, debt financing. The idea that we've had is that there'll be a presentation at council and possibly combining both the parks, you know, not both, excuse me, but the park plan and the City Yard plan and trying to figure out a joint funding program for them and not having to keep going back to the debt service and figuring it out. So we'll combine both of those and bring those back before you. Question about irrigation at Zephyr Park is, we'll have to get with the landscape architect. There should be landscaping probably in the landscaped areas. But as far as grass, it'll just be behia. So I don't foresee any irrigation in those areas. Question about the, where the money's coming from for the historic preservation, and that is penny for Pasco dollars. Then there was a question regarding sidewalks outside of the CRA, specifically Airport Road and 6th Avenue. There is sidewalk funding for that. Don't have the number off the top of my head. But we have ordered surveys for both of those. I did check today. We've not received those. So a call's been placed to the surveyor to get an update on the survey of both of those roads. So there is a million dollars that's budgeted for sidewalks. So outside of the CRA, yes.
500,000 for trails.
That'll get you one, unfortunately.
I think it's about a block.
A block of what you're looking for, sorry.
When you talked about, like, these projects on Zephyr Park and the City Yard, you talked about undesignated fund balance or reserves. What exactly do you mean by that?
So there's revenues that were not expended in X number of year, you know, X year. And so there's kind of like our savings account. There's a pot of money that is in the undesignated reserve. There, it's. Ted, you want to help me?
Is that like the 8 million that they talked about in the audit?
Correct. That's exactly what it is. Yes.
Okay.
So those dollars, and those have to be, just to clarify for everybody, is those dollars can only be used for non-reoccurring projects, expenditures, emergency items, not for reoccurring expenses.
Is there, so we're talking about projects that are probably going to cost $25 million if we kind of blend them both for, so we don't want to spend the entire reserve, I'm sure. So there'd be some loan, but would penny for Pasco and things like that also contribute?
Yes. Yeah, I think that's part of the presentation and the conversation is a combination of the reserve dollars plus penny for Pasco. Penny for Pasco was renewed back in last November for 15 years.
Okay. And the reason I ask is because in the capital improvement plan, these dollars are plugged into the plan. So it's like coming up. But you did show also that you have what the penny for Pasco reserves are. And that's like. That's the total project amount you want to spend for penny, or penny for Pasco in here?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
It's. It's confusing to me because you showed the total, total penny for Pasco shows $10 million.
What page are you on, Steve?
Or CIP for Zephyr Park?
Okay.
The last page of the budget.
So it's on the very last page.
Yeah.
So we will be using penny for Pasco funds to cover the loan or the debt financing.
Right.
So we will have those expenditures all at once when we go out for the debt financing. So we want to plug it in because things are going to be happening as soon as we get approved. Expenditures are going to start rolling in. So the expenditure still will be going out and probably out of that line item. But then, you know, the loan payments back will be going, coming out of the penny for Pasco.
So the money labeled here, penny for Pasco, that's loans included and the payback of it. So. Or is that just the total of what we think that those projects down to that would total 10 million?
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's.
Well, it doesn't, it's, all right. Okay, I'll get with you later to clarify that. I don't understand it.
Well, the expenditure, like I said, even though we're going to be going out for debt financing, the expenditures are going to be occurring, you know, as the project goes on. So we had to, we wanted to plug in expenditures that could possibly happen during those two fiscal years, '26 and '27. Because we will, the project's going to kick off and we are going to be spending money.
I see the, I know what the confusion is, is that we show, for instance, City Yard building construction, $4.5 million each year of '26 and '27. But in reality, that $9 million will be spread over a much longer period. But they're, right now, they're shown in '26 and '27, so we can clarify that.
All right. And yeah, and that's why I didn't understand what the 10 million is in the penny then. Is that a, we don't have $10 million in penny for Pasco funding.
No. No.
No, not right now, no.
Yeah. So that's, I think that's the confusion, is it's shown in two years, we need to, because that's when the expense will occur. So we need to spread that out because there will be debt financing that we pay over the next probably 15 or so years.
Right. And that's what I, I mean, I did the same thing with sanitation and with utility. And so in the first two years, you have the 16 million.
Correct.
Spent, I guess.
Correct.
It'll go further.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that and clean that up. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. There's also, there was a question about not forgetting Gunner Park when we do the Parks Master Plan. That is noted. There was a question about the speed signs or a speed sign on South Avenue that, there is a sign there, a temporary sign. And we also budgeted dollars in fiscal year '25 for additional, a couple additional speed signs.
I know speed signs, so we just have it where they're portable to where we can just move them around to the hotspots as needed instead of make it permanent purchases in certain areas?
So there's, there's both. We have it. Speed signs, we have both portable and permanent. Right. No. Budgeted, we have two that are permanent, but we have portable ones as well. Yeah. Yeah. So we have portable signs that we can move around. But then we also have purchased permanent signs like that you see on Simon's 23rd First Street that we will put in kind of known areas, known high-speed areas to try to slow people down. We've also budgeted some dollars after a conversation with Pasco County MPO about, for additional striping and some other measures that we're going to try to see if those slow people down.
We budgeted some sound deadening so we could hear what we're saying up here?
Yeah, we're, we're going to work on that as well. We talked about the incentive pay. We've talked about, there was a question about numbers for design and construction of Zephyr Park, City Yard. Kind of talked about the construction. And so we have the design, City Yard is right at two million dollars, and Zephyr Park was just over nine hundred thousand. And those were recently approved by council. There was a question or statement on training, those are duly noted and we're looking at those. There was a question about the city attorney and those fees. If you remember, we increased the the hourly rate, so that is a a reason for it. And this isn't, you know, RPOs are also increasing, which is a good thing that we're doing them, but they, they cost money and time, and they're not always the first that are heard at the courthouse, so that is part of it. There was a question about when the fire contractual services agreement is up. We have fiscal year twenty-five and then fiscal year twenty-six and twenty-seven. And I believe this year it's three hundred and something thousand. Next year, it's like one seventy-six, and then year three is like two twenty-six. So we got about six hundred thousand dollars left over the next three years that we'll, we'll be paying.
Alright.
Oh, there we go, alright. Zephyr Park Safety Initiative, we've talked about that at the staff level, so we're, we're working on that. Watch out, I know who it was. And then there was a question regarding hybrid jobs, so I've spoken with HR, and we're going to work on a presentation for that as well. There's also a conversation or question regarding Alice Hall and having that in the CIP. That's a conversation that will be had at the November, or excuse me, not November, the September twenty-third CRA meeting. The Kimberly Horn will be here to present, GAI, sorry, GAI, GAI will be here to present to the CRA board, and we can have a conversation around Alice Hall. The concern was removing Alice Hall before we have an alternative. Is it, you know, does it remain there, is it relocated or rebuilt somewhere else? So those are all conversations that we need to have, and staff needs direction from council of this is the direction we want to go, so we can go that way. I believe that was all the questions that I received this week. Are there any questions from council?
Anybody want to follow up on some of their questions?
Yeah, Mr. President, we kind of went over a capital improvement plan, but we really didn't, we didn't give it enough justice, and when I say that, we need to look at the funding sources, we need to look at the repayment of the funding sources, and we need to stretch the timeline out to match what, what's really going to happen. I mean, and I understand that maybe our ten thousand or ten million would be, there'd be an entry also into some type of a debt at that time, and that's where some of the, or the bulk of the money would come from for the projects. But I'd really, I really want us to do a real comprehensive look at at that because it's going to, it's going to dictate what other capital projects we're going to be able to take on, and everybody kind of needs to be aware of, you know, the costs going forward.
Correct.
And you, you said we were going to do that, have that as just a workshop or a meeting, okay?
I believe so, yeah, I don't think we need to try to cram that into.
No, no, I, I think that's a, that's a single item there, because it'll, you know, it's, it's a long-range look, and that's what I think we should do.
Correct.
Thank you.
Eric, you have anything, or?
I'd as well ask a question, we're not going anywhere.
Hey, I'm trying to keep my mouth shut today.
But we're going back upstairs, well, that's true. So while you're, while you're, oh, you have a question?
Well, we had talked about, I, I had a meeting with Senator Burgess today, and we had talked about some of the septic-to-sewer projects, and we drove around the Sixth Avenue area. But we also went into Lincoln Heights and then up Airport Road, and we had talked about possibly, you know, it would be to get everybody, it would have to be coming from both sides. And the airport roadside would come, I guess, from the lift station and connections in Lincoln Heights. Is that right?
Possible, yes.
And so that would be something that if those projects get approved, or if we, if there's matching funds or anything, or would we have reserves available to move on those if we get some state funding?
So we applied for FDP, FDPE grant to do Otis Moody. We did not include going down Airport Road, because I didn't have the information to make the submittal. So it would be from the, on Sixth Avenue, from the railroad tracks east to about Brown Street. So it'd pick up everything on Sixth Avenue. The portion on Airport Road was not part of that grant submittal. So I don't know if that answers.
Well, we're meeting with the county, I was going to bring up some, you know, ask a question about community development block grant money too. So we can do that because, I mean, there's people out there other than just living Otis Moody that are interested in the connection. And since the entire thing is in our utility service area and they all have city water, it would be better, I guess, to try to connect everybody, but it would be separate projects because I don't think they're coming all from the same place.
Yeah, I, I can't answer which direction it flows.
Otis Moody would be coming from this lift station at South Avenue and over.
And it, it might be, I, I don't, I don't know the, the directional flow there. Yeah, there is a lift station that's at Sixth Ave, South Ave, that it very well may tie into that and run back and pick up everything from Armstrong back to there. But I don't know that for sure.
And Steve, did you say that, were you going to bring it up at the joint meeting with the county?
Yeah, it was one of the things I sent to Billy because. I did, I also wanted to, I had a question about the city attorney also, but you answered that. And then you, you did do some, in the administration, your professional services was cut by about five thousand.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Professional services on page twenty-two. Or page nineteen, it depends on where you, page nineteen, I think, in the actual budget.
Your professional services line item for administration?
I printed it from.
We dropped it down to five thousand.
I printed it off the website.
Okay.
Cut it by five thousand?
Thanks.
What was, what's the question, I'm sorry?
Professional services was cut by five thousand, is that where you were trying to just cut things from different departments?
Yes, yes, yeah. Sorry, I can't hear, I can't read lips that well either, so.
I don't talk loud anyway, so.
Mr. President, Billy, I know we got.
Yeah, lean up, I can't hear you, sorry.
Billy, I know we got money to, for the movie theater, that money was just, the money that we've gotten so far was just to purchase the building?
That money is not to the city, so it is not in our budget.
Oh, I, I.
That is, Main Street has that, but yes, they have the money to purchase and to do renovation, and hopefully Senator Burgess comes through with more money.
Thanks.
While you guys are thinking about questions, our next step is to September ninth. You'll have the final millage in front of you, which is six point two five mils, which is the same as it currently is, and the tentative budget will be presented. And then on September twenty-third, you will have the final budget for approval. If there's, and then, you know, we can always make changes. Between now and the twenty-third, after the twenty-third's approval, there are no more changes unless you do a budget amendment.
And then just to be clear, we're all agree on the salaries, we're going to get four percent to employees in October. The incentive bonus probably in December, and the rest of it, the three percent in April.
That is what is proposed, yes. So as long as I don't get different direction, that's what's in there, yes, sir.
And that's what's in the latest draft.
Correct, yes. Any questions, everyone's ready to go run to the car? They got to bring more pumps, I think, to pack the Silver Oaks.
Even to the water guy to bring protection.
Was there anything else that you needed direction on, I mean, the salaries you got?
Salaries I got, I got direction on the incentive tiered tier, I think that's all we needed.
I guess the only other thing we need to talk about then more is the, the revenue side of the projects in the capital improvement plan.
Correct.
How you're going to finance those and what percent will be undesignated, penny for Pasco, and then a loan, or?
Correct. Yep, we can do those, right?
Oh, on the, I guess the tiered incentive, did we, did we make a decision on which one you were going to go with?
My, I'll let you decide, but what I was doing was the fifteen hundred to two fifty.
Okay.
You know, original, like I said, original plan was fifteen hundred to five hundred, and anybody above that top salary was not, was going to get zero.
But that was, that, this one here, where you added into two fifty on the eighteen employees?
Right here, correct, yeah, on the screen.
Right.
That's what you'd see, so if, if you want something different than that.
Oh, I just wanted to make sure that was the one that you were going forward with.
This is the one I was going to go forward with, the fifteen hundred thousand five hundred two fifty, unless council has a different direction.
Right, that.
Any other questions? That's all I have, if there's not any questions.
And I, do we have any citizens' comments? I'm your gen, okay. I mean, I can adjourn the meeting, or we can sing karaoke till the brain dies down, huh?
Or we can, we can go continue our.
Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the, the budget workshop.